So just so the record reflects it, because I don't think it always dies. I'm so excited that a lot of the retirees, because what do you realize we're not electively, that group, and I'll include myself in that number, of nine people dedicated 197 years. Twelve years, twelve years, a lot of service. It's hard to lose that talent, but congratulations on the retirees. Use your service and never forget. We are then jumping to our listeners in my age reports. Do any wait a long time? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Our reports tonight are reflected at the end of April. And past the end of April, we had $10.70 in our bank accounts, which ties to our cash flow, which is good news that we'll make it through the summer without being debarrer. We had expended approximately 72% of our budget, and we had received approximately 90% of our budget. In the school bunch one, as of the end of April, we were revenue over expenditures, a little over $9,000. In our federal funds, we've received more than half of our federal funding, and I spoke with our treasurer today, and more money came in in May, and there's another drawdown coming in June, so we should be good there. Our capital fund, everything has been expended. The LEM project out there is our smart schools bucket, and I'm happy to report that everything has been ordered. Some things have been paid for. And once we complete paying for everything else, start the process of filing with the state to be reimbursed for that money. That is all I have for tonight. Are there any questions?
You're welcome, and I will meet Mr. Maireddy as the grid for the board.
Yep, two things, both in front of you. One is the grid, and then one is just a kind of a cheat sheet on the COVID relief grants. So we realized the first meeting in May was too soon to do the April numbers, and then the second meeting in May, we forgot to do it. So both the April and May columns are new to you. I'm really only going to focus on the May ones tonight, but I forsaken consistency, gave you both of them. Also, just a reminder that now, as the school year is wrapping up and the auditors are beginning to double check everything, this will be the last grid you get until the audit is final, and then we reconcile the June, and then we move forward with the next one. So this is kind of the picture, kind of in the eighth inning of the game here, and we don't record the ninth inning. We let the official scorekeepers do that. So salaries, we see that we're about $375,000 under budget. A lot of that has to do with less substitutes that happened this year, and also a bunch of fewer aid costs. At the end of the year, we kicked up our aid numbers, as you'll see, but we capitalized a lot of those. Some of that came from the models that we used in the buildings. Same thing with benefits. Benefits and salaries obviously go together, so about a quarter million dollar savings. All health insurance has been paid with just the June payrolls remaining. So again, we feel pretty confident in that number. You will see equipment is up. That was by design. There's two things that went into it. Some of it was purposeful one-time purchases that we made. The other one is some of that is offset the accounting function with the $40,000 underneath it in textbook software library tuition. So some of that, well, 40 of the 84, is basically just flipping from one column to the other. The 125 over budget when it comes to supplies, that is primarily, if not all, having to do with COVID costs, and we have not received any FEMA reimbursements yet, so that number is not final. But that is the amount that we've paid to operate our schools during the pandemic. And we're waiting to see what FEMA is going to pay us back. Contractual, you'll see a good $225,000 under budget. Most of our bills have come in, again, only one month lot, and really only one more accounts payable cycle in that, so again, that's a pretty good number. That $40,000 again is kind of a phantom number, because the 84 above it kind of counts for that. BOCs, our March invoices in, that $90,000 seems to be where we're going to be for under the BOCs budget. And then transportation, so we bumped that up from $35,000 to $75,000. There's really only one month of invoicing left, where majority of that savings has come from this year is simply because of the limited athletic contest and the limited amount of travel for that. So again, that's not a, it wasn't an over budgeted, that was just how it ran this year. We expect that number to be much more true next year. $15,000 in debt service, that means universal feeding, the money we've made in universal feeding, plus no unpaid lunches. So the parts of the budget that the administration can control, we came in about $861,000 under budget in terms of spending. And the next one, remember, positives here are good. So on the top, negatives are good, on the bottom, positives are good. $12,537 is just interest and penalties for folks who struggle to pay some of their taxes. That next number is a little shocking, 45, that's actually 45,000, so just like the month before it, so I just forgot some zeros there. So that number carries over, and again, that's what the CARES Act money started contributing, but that's $45,000. The $101,000 over budget in terms of revenue when it comes to sales tax includes the March quarterly payment and the $190 from CARES. So again, remember, we're $190 up in that. Sales tax is actually down, super roughly speaking, $89,000. But the CARES money, that's where we've accounted for that. And then the non-public billings, direct billings came in much higher than expected. Some of the billing cycles caught up. Sometimes that's feast or famine, but that's 185 to the good. So that number underneath the 298 number, if you actually make that 45 of 45,000, is the 343 number from the month before. So that's just the typo, because the formula didn't realize, I made a mistake. So we're 861 to the good in terms of expenses. We're 343 to the good in terms of revenue, bringing us about 1.1 million to the good. Underneath that is what we have in the appropriated fund balance, unappropriated fund balance, and the TRS ERS reserve, as it all shakes out. Underneath is the current reserve balances. Staffing remains consistent. The only thing you'll see in staffing that may raise your eyebrow is we did have a bump in the number of teacher aid hours in the last month, and that was solely going back to the five days. We needed to kind of reshuffle and rehire to make sure that those could run. But again, that's all was a, it was a decision we made. It wasn't something that we didn't, that happened unforeseen. We knew that was happening. And then all the reserve fund balances flowing down from there. If you have any high-level questions, ask me. If you have any very technical questions, Joanne can answer them. Any questions on the grid? No, okay, good. That's the last grid you'll see. We will finalize this grid once the audit is complete and start the next grid in October of 21, if you can believe it. Okay, next, you got a very quick cheat sheet. Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so we, okay, so we have the spread of money, which is really great, about 3.1 million. And so we're really excited about it, but the problem is, as many times, we have like two weeks to figure it out, and how are we willing to spend it? So Mark, Joanne, and Cindy have really done a great job. They've worked with the team to say, hey, what are the things that we need? Hopefully, we look at it as primarily one-time expenses, so they pulled this together for me. And again, Mark's going to explain the details of it. Basically speaking, if we are able to adjust it, we have to post it by June 15th. So that's why we need to discuss it today, even though it's, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever that is.
Yeah, we basically have three weeks to spend 3.1 million dollars. So if you've ever seen the old movie Brewster's Millions, that's what it felt like where we had to figure out a way to spend money. But the good news is, we have been having these conversations all year long of what do we want to get back to doing? What do we need to keep doing? How to respond to the effects of the pandemic? So super briefly, on top, you'll see two boxes, one called CRRSAA, the other one called ARP. Those are the two main grant categories. All of this is far more nuanced than this one-page sheet, but if you have questions, happy to do it, but it's super, super nuanced. Long story short, CRRSAA, don't ask me what it stands for, is 1.68 million dollars. We have to spend that by September 30th of 2023, but we have to publish our plan of how we plan on spending it by June 15th of this year. It is able to be edited and adjusted through that process again, but your initial allocations have to be on the website by June 15th. This isn't for board vote, but it is for board kind of input and discussion, just like we're responsible for engaging our community. To do that, I'll go back to that. The ARP grant is 1.4 million. We have an additional year to spend that, so there's September 30th, 2024, and they gave us two more weeks to figure out how to spend that. So that one has to be spent, or allocated, I should say, by July 1st of this year. So we're only going to talk about the CRRSAA grant today. The ARP, we have yet to figure out, but we have two weeks, so we'll get there.
Are you going to have that ready for us to see it on the agent?
That's our plan. God willing, in the creek's bound to rise, we'll do it. So, community survey, went out gauging community interest in eight areas. The areas we asked them to rank from low priority to high priority were an academic summer camp, after-school academic support, remedial in-school help, social emotional priorities, professional development for teachers and staff, technology, health and safety, and then open other. There were 89 responses to open other. I should have made copies, I'll send it to you. But I will say, the lion's share of those 89 responses were just nuances of the seven categories above it. I'd like it here, I'd like it there, but most of them played within those top seven. In that, we decided, because time is very short, that the first thing we're going to do is focus on stuff we can get, because that's a little more closed-ended. What we want to talk about for the next grant is look at programs that could be sustainable beyond the length of the grant, because we want to make sure that, well, we do have to obviously deal with the kids who've dealt with the pandemic. We don't want to hire to fire two years later. So you're going to see some more programmatic things coming out for the ARP grant. But our plan right now is to allocate the 1 point, allocate, that's, oh my goodness, I'm losing it. Allocate, the crocodile. Summer Schools Camp, to run the summer camp that Mr. Moore and Mr. Libra will talk about just a little bit for two years. It's going to cost us about $160,000. Some one-time technology purchases, or you'll see some two-time technology purchases. The faculty computers, two cycles of student Chromebook replenishment, which is the K for aid replenishment, so that the kids get their lifetime Chromebooks. The high school, middle school lab refurbishments. There's about six labs that are still computer labs with some high-end computers. And CAT 6 cabling, which is basically upgrading the communication phone infrastructure at the middle school. So all of that together is going to cost about $635. The nice part of what that does is it offers some backend relief on the money that we need to put into the tech reserve, and we are allowed to do that. So the money that we were going to spend out of the tech reserve for some of these computers, we now pay out of the grant, which then takes the pressure off of funding the tech reserve, which puts more money in the general fund. There's a little bit of Rob Peter to pay Paul on that one. New hires out of this allocation, and we believe these are sustainable. A math AAS person who will float between the middle school and high school, providing some math remediation. Behavioral specialist to really help with our teachers with kids that are coming out and having social, emotional, behavioral issues in terms of what's a positive proactive way to approach and find solutions. A literacy teacher to catch up on some of the ELA and reading skills that we believe are going to be lacking at the middle school level. STEAM at Parkdale, funding the STEAM lab. Special ed TOSA to help Cindy in terms of grant funding and making sure we get all the dollars we need while Cindy turns her attention to the programs and the people, and making sure that special ed is doing what it should be doing. And then also the tech TOSA to help teachers integrate what the brave new world of technology and education is. That right now, obviously, everything is screams. We don't want that moving forward, but we want to learn the best lessons and find the best balance. So I need a teacher who's tech savvy to work with those teachers. Tutors, internal, external, that has to do with kids, whether they are on long-term, short-term, or just need extra remedial help. That'll be two years worth of tutors. And then the remote academy is something we put in here as a placeholder for if, and again, the legalities of opening in full remote and full in-person are not out yet. But BOCs is going to be running, they believe, a full remote academy. So if we have one kid in third grade who's remote, they can join with other kids in Erie County who are remote and run a remote there. Tuition for that is projected to be at $11,000 per kid, which really is our cost of tuition here anyways. So we just earmark saving 15 slots, just as a number, thinking that if one or two kids per grade still want to go all remote, and that is a legal option, the funding is there. So I know that was a lot, and I've never spent 1.68 million with so few words, but I also wanted to make it accessible and understandable. What we need from you is, is this generally the direction that you all feel comfortable in? For the next 1.4 million, do you want more of this type of stuff? Or is there a major category that has not been addressed with the CRRSAA that you'd like us to focus on for the ARP money? And I know that's a lot, but Brian's going to talk, and we can go from there.
Yes, just a couple of comments on this. Again, when we're looking at that, like you say, we're going to turn this around very quickly. You know, we're planning two and three years out. That's, you know, that's how we typically do these things, right? It's like rush, 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 rush. And then, the good thing is that we have time to work on this and maybe adjust. So once we post our plan, in the first 1.68 million, we're really thinking about one-time expenditures primarily. So that's where like the summer camps, or one or two-time expenditures over two years, where the summer camps, all the technology, and even the remote academy and the tutor grant, that's really in response to the needs immediately of our students over the next couple of years to kind of level things off on those kids who have been struggling. But we look at the new hires, that's going to be something that we're going to try to work on and then build into the budget as we see some of those positions may be necessary for the long. And then again, as Mark mentioned too, like, you know, obviously, mental health is a huge component for us. So that's going to be, we're going to be looking at that part in the next grant. Just needing a little bit of extra time to figure out how that exactly, how that exactly looks. So again, like I said, they spent a ton of time kind of surveying the administrative gap, gathering data to what we can put onto it to turn it around in the appropriate amount of time. So like, try to redense it, make it reasonable for you, is what the goal was here. So I don't know if you have any questions about it at all.
Yeah, I just have just a couple. The faculty computers, is that saying, replacing all of the computers for the faculty or the certain computers?
All of them. So the faculty laptops are coming to their end of life, and we already had budgeted. Again, that was one of those things in the tech reserve that this is going to offset.
And so what's nice about this too is that, like, so we've been building a tech reserve for that replacement. There's always, every year slowly creating more and more money, so we know when the laptops, like you said, come to the end of life, we have the money ready to replace them. Now we can shift that reserve money to another space, because we'll be able to use this, and this will last them three to four years, you know, for the next round.
And then I just had a couple. The tutor, internal, external, how many tutors are you talking about in terms of for that, two years?
So that's more billed in terms of hours. It's not, we're not hiring bodies. That is responding to, again, and a lot of that is we don't know. We've kind of looked historically, and we've put a multiplier to it, just, again, we don't fully know. So it's not bodies, it's hours that we would either do with our people who go above and beyond, or there are some outside specialized agencies that we're responsible for providing that tutoring, or obviously, medical needs, things like that. So that's not a people, that's an hourly type thing.
It's approximately 1,600 hours per year. And that will cover the whole district, and all the Jerry's correct. So understanding you're right, we can make changes to this. So if, for example, come next year, we say there aren't a lot of people who want to be full remote, that money that's sort of right now earmarked there might be able to go into tutoring hours if we decide we want to do something like that, or if you go into, you know, some after-school academic support in some other way, or if you go into whatever the social working programs are, then it was a big deal.
Yeah, so our intention is to come back full-time, K-12, right? Everybody's back in person, full-time. If this state hires, offering more options, so we're still waiting for their guidance. We're hoping that it will be out soon. It's supposed to be out first week of May, you know, so here we are. So still waiting, so it makes it kind of challenge the plan. But if we do come back full, everybody full in person, then that, that money would then be reallocated.
As long as it's in the, the grant money, the only provision is it's got to be spread by 2023?
Yes.
And so when we publish this and we make changes to it, is there some approval of that plan?
Well, that's the question. So there's, yes and no. So long story short, they want open transparent communication. They want community feedback. So part of the, you're supposed to solicit in building the plan, you're supposed to publicize the plan, and continuing to listen for feedback. But it's not a board vote, so we're not, it kind of runs, obviously, out of respect for the board and the relationship we have, we're going through you, but it kind of, it's a district decision that needs.
No, I don't think board, I mean, government, government, somebody saying, yes, that money.
They give us these very nuanced categories, and basically, if you're probably within them, yeah.
It's an amendment process that we use currently with our federal grants, like our title grants and our IDPA grants. So there's a process that we go through, and we get approval from the state.
The good news is, it seems that they want this money being spent, and so they're not nickel and diming you. They're giving you more ways to spend it than there are to lose it, so that's always hopeful.
Right, but part of the process was, Joanne went through like really stringent, Cindy went through a very stringent evaluation of what is for this one.
Yes.
And then from that point, you know, I had a lot of great ideas, and they're like, no. So then they figure out our focus, and then that's how this was generated.
And I said, right, so the focus of this is not the social. We're going to focus on that in the next, in the ARP grant, and understand that's.
That was the kind of goal going into it, because we want that to be a little more fleshed out, a little more systematic, a little more sustainable. Whereas this is stuff that is more either one-time, two-time, or a more immediate kind of triage-type, academic triage-type response.
Yeah, yeah, exactly that, Mark. Most of this is around higher merit, we want to be personally, so that's a one-time expense. And then the academic piece of this is really related to the immediate response to our kids' needs. So we don't exactly know what that is, but we're putting like remedial, extra remedial people in place as one-term assignments. So they're going to know coming in that you may be in this role for one or two years, depending on the needs of our students. And you put it, then turn it into something that's permanent, yes, you could. You know, depending on retirement, somebody may leave that person that can slide in, or we actually may need to make that particular position.
Would you plan to publish it on the website or something, if you're going to post it, that's your community?
Yes, we're required to, post it, yep. Yep, there's a whole process, yep.
Remember, I sent out a last word, the survey, yeah, so that's, this is the data from that survey. So we use that, again, to generate these ideas, and then this will follow on the COVID-19.
And then do you need to, like, add anything to that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so again, again, that's in more of an immediate response, the needs are suits right now. That is something that we've talked about for a while. So that is probably one of the positions that we consider maintaining, potentially, for.
The person will cover all the damage?
Well, in the beginning, yeah. And then again, I see what we would decide is that, right? So maybe at the beginning, you get a secondary, a real specialist, you know, like, once between, like, that one, they'll run into high school, and they would. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have decided whether that's going to be a special ed type decision or a more of a.
No, no, we, we, we literally just, we know there's a need, and once we get this published, then we can, like, these aren't being posted tomorrow morning. This is a, we got the general blessing, now we got to do all our due diligence in terms of what exactly these things look like.
Oh, yeah, a huge, absolutely. You know what it'll be, it'll be a junction for the social workers and the counselors and the psychopaths. So it'll be some kind of coordinated effort to do that.
I want to thank you for all the time you took to put this together, because I know that, you know, it's great to say you got all this money to say how you got to spend it in these categories. And you guys have captured, I think, other than that social emotional piece which you're going to cover there, you captured a lot in that initial, I'm trying to say, knowing, and I look forward to seeing you implement some of that. And then obviously, that's going to involve this, who else to get it done.
Well, it is unfortunate that we have like, that we have two years out to spend this, and we have to turn it around quickly, in the midst of everything else that's going on, right? So we've got a lot, a lot going on in school right now, and voting time and attention to this. But like everything like this, it will just, it will develop over time. And then we'll talk about how this money is shifted back into work, you know, where we're noticing greatest need. We're going to put the monies, we have to file the amendments and all, put the money in that direction.
Oh, I have to focus on, and about those things, and how we were impacted in social. Mark, I have a question about the eight areas of interest.
Yes.
Are these listed as the work of conference based on the survey, or these?
No, no, those were the categories, those, no, no, those aren't the rankings. Those were, those were literally the order we asked the questions in, but that was just. Yeah, what they did, they didn't rank them from one to eight. What they did was, they ranked each one individually from one to four. So it was more of a, is this a high priority for you or a low priority for you? But we didn't then prioritize them.
So how do we obtain this?
How do we obtain this? I'm going to keep turning my camera all the way over to Joanne.
I'm ready to see Buffalo announce, and I don't even know if it's accurate, but I saw the news that they already have down their allocation plan, so.
That can be the CARES Act, that's what we have too. The first CARES Act stimulus, we have about half of it. These two stimuluses, we don't have yet, but the state is required to send us 25% of it statutorily within a timeframe. I can't remember that over the top.
So just from automatic, we don't have to apply for it?
Not for personal, first payment. Once we do our application and we get that set, then the state statutorily has to send us 25% of our allocation by a certain date. And then we do the same process as we do for the title grants to draw down money we requested. And Julie's been doing a really nice job of that, trying to request every month or every other month.
And will it reside in the special aid fund?
Yes, it'll reside. These two will reside in the special aid fund, unlike the first stimulus, which is residing in the general fund.
Well, and so I remind you more again that we need to watch that special aid fund and perhaps get a monthly update on monies that are coming in, and so that we can track these funds and the expenditures that are occurring, just, just so that we are on top of our due diligence with regard to monitoring the, this, this whole process. So I appreciate the fact that, that we received the first flush of plan for the use of funds, and I would hope that as the months go by, every month or two, we can have an update on the revenues and the expenditures associated with that fund.
Great, say whatever you want.
There's the chart there, right there. Can you put one more line on your chart?
You, you got it.
And so what's nice about this, as well, as Joe was saying, is that the CARES Act, the money came in, the state kept it, and made money, it passed it along, but then made an adjustment to offset the increase. But the state is not allowed to do that with this one. So this money, ours, I understand, is guaranteed, correct?
Correct, correct.
So that's an important.
We want to add a more discussion and update on the progress of the reopening of schools.
Yep, well, we continue to move along. Like I said, it's been a really busy time, you know, we're all back full-time, and these are going really well. The kids are actively engaged, and it's very glad to have them back. As you've heard from the principals, we've got a lot of PR activities now where you'll participate in, especially now that we can remove our masks when we're outdoors. So compared to where today, you know, really like to see us indoors. But again, we're waiting for some guidance update, and that may be coming, I don't know. Certainly, we had to talk about that. So it has been, been busy, but a lot of really good things happening. And so I think each day is getting better, and we're, and we're moving towards ending the school, and we have about two and a half weeks left. And so it's hard to believe that we're here. But we are working with the task force, so I'm going to have, even though I haven't received anything from the state, I brought the task force in around maybe two months ago or something like that to talk about, like where you're at. I'm going to do the same thing in terms of our intentions for opening the school in the fall. Like I said, you know, we're going to go back full-time to the year of fall, unless I get some other direction from the state governor's office, SED, whatever. So I'm really hoping that's going to happen, and things will continue to improve over the summer. Rate for stay low, you know, vaccinated, all those kinds of things. So anything from, from the group, just anything, anything you have to add to that? No, just kind of standard operating procedure, things are going well. Matt, Libra, or Matt Brown?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Move on, yep.
Bill?
Guys?
Doing transition to, um, for real exams this week, Monday, Tuesday. We have all our remote learners in today, was there, uh, today for exams. And then we'll do that all again next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And Regents exams, um, just the four Regents exams that we're administering, um, start next Thursday with the English, um, Regents exam. So, uh, like I said earlier, rock and roll.
Any comments at all? Cindy, anything? Doug? All right. Thank you. Summer school. Okay, yeah, the summer school's moving along. Um, uh, guys have really kind of gotten all the teachers in line, which is really great because that's been a little bit of a challenge. Uh, we're reaching out to parents. It's interesting on the survey when we asked that question, um, summer camp, uh, 32% said, I'm sorry, 37% said it was a low priority and 18% said it was a high priority. So that was something that we thought was really important, but the, the 90 people that responded to this said it was just the opposite. So, so we're not getting, we're not getting a lot of responses. I think honestly people kind of want to break. You know what I mean? So that's kind of what we're hearing, but I'll, I'll turn it over to you and you can explain, uh, how it's going.
So, yeah, uh, Mr. Russell talked about the personnel, uh, coming along well in that secondary program. We'll have teachers at all for content areas, math, English, social studies, and science. Uh, and we have designated those people already and we've been, we've been working together to take a look at what that instruction will look like through the summer. We'll have two aides that can support in the classroom as well as help with some of our additional requirements and test checks at all. And we've also noticed this year that the counseling center in the high school has been, had a steady stream of students who needed that support for the mental health. So we want to keep that going through the summer. So we're, we are going to have an individual in the high school counseling center for students who through the summer need that support. They can come in and touch base and connect either on a weekly scheduled basis or, uh, uh, just stop in. I'm having a rough day. I need to talk to somebody. That will be available for our students in the high school. Uh, we have invited, uh, students for the skills portion of the secondary program in grade seven through 12. So all those things have gone out. We have had a reasonable response. Got about a maybe 10 or so seventh and eighth graders that have already said they want to sign up. And then a few high schoolers that aren't needing credit recovery, but still would like to come for the high school program just for the skill support. But we can offer that to students. Um, in the next week, we will learn who, uh, has failed a graduation required course this year. And so then we'll start inviting those students to recover that credit through the summer school. Uh, before that, however, they will have an opportunity during the Regents week to come in if they, if they, we're going to invite them to come in and, uh, recover that credit even before summer school starts. We're trying to give a, like a phased and a tiered approach to support our students this year because we know it has been a challenging year. So, uh, those students will be getting that notification. I've been meeting personally, maybe 30 or so students personally already that I see as likely to need one of these tiered approaches. They come, wow, to get me and I walk through what it's going to look like both the Regents week and then also the summer school. So they are comfortable and they have a vision for how they can recover the credit. Uh, and so then in the next week or so, we're going to send that, that information out with call and write to parents, uh, for students in those situations. Uh, so that list will be finalized in the next week. Um, that's the high school program. Any questions before turning over to Mr. Libra?
All right.
Thank you.
Just had a moment for a second. As Travis's mentor, I just got almost teary eyed to see how he presented. He stood when he put it up. Really appreciate it. All right. Um, so, uh, we are at the, uh, the tail end of our, our alternates for each of the grade levels. And we are confident that we will be able to reach full, uh, capacity in each of our classes at, at many if not all of our, our grade levels. Uh, the responses have been slowly, as, as we get the rejections from some of our initial offers, uh, we then call the next set of parents and then they need some time. So, so we're slowly getting to, to that. But, uh, as we go through, it's, uh, you know, responses are, are, you know, mixed. Uh, yes, it's a no, as Travis has seen in the high school and as we've seen all along at the, the elementary level. Uh, as far as the schedule goes, I want to, to provide you with an update. I, I kind of alluded to a couple of these things and then I've, I've heard, uh, your requests, uh, you know, since we started talking about summer school. So we did solidify, I, I talked about Lisa Brown being our camp mentor and really can't beat to this. And, uh, she has a wonderful ideas going, but we were able to solidify the schedule. So the students are going to receive, um, for a half hour out of three hours each day, they're going to receive on one day phys ed, another day, um, music and or art, and then on, on another day, uh, STEEP. And she's also going to try to coordinate some guest presenters to come in to help facilitate those, uh, experiences as, as well. Uh, as you have, uh, you know, mentioned, uh, like I said in earlier meetings, that we want to have that well-rounded, uh, approach to, uh, to the summer school. So we are, uh, we're moving ahead with that. And also I'm really happy to tell you that, uh, as Travis mentioned, she'll, uh, counseling support in high school. We are going to have both of our social workers, so Christina 25 and Maggie Minigan are going to be working. They're, they're kind of tag teaming the, the summer and down in the K six level. And they'll be available for the students, but, uh, just like Lisa's providing that, the, the daily special for the students. Uh, once a week, the students are going to have a half hour session with them and they're going to push into the classrooms. And they're going to be, uh, talking about social emotional learning, coping skills, uh, stress relief techniques. Uh, so we'll have that aspect of it as well. Uh, so, uh, the educational piece, but also that piece there where they can meet with individual students if issue arise or, uh, if there's additional support they can provide to those students. Uh, and that they may already be seeing, um, this year or so, kind of continuation into the summer with, with those services we can provide for them. So that's, uh, the updates that I had for them.
Matt, do you see that a half hour session each week?
Uh, it'll be for the, so for, for Christina and Maggie, they will be so, so once a day. So they're going to be, uh, one day they would be K one for a half hour. The next day they'll meet with, uh, second, third grade for a half hour. And then, uh, fourth, fifth, and sixth will combine on, on that certain day. So, so the students will get a half hour of instruction from, from them each week. So they would only see them, they'd see them either on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. And then also they'd be available for them, uh, if they did that during that, that, that three hour span as well. Any other questions?
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item C, filling in the vacancy on the Board of Education. So, um, I think I mentioned last time we talked to the lawyers about what the board's obligation is to fill the vacancy, vacancy on the seat. And the board can appoint someone or the board can choose to hold a special election. Here, you appointed in the one year and go with the next election. So if you wait, it would be until the next regular scheduled election would be for next year. It would probably not until next July, but then the, um, at that time in next year's election. That we can, I know, or if you run a special election now, they would just fill out their later that term into the two-year, two-year longer. I mean, that, I mean, so if, if we, like you appoint someone, they would just serve until the next regular scheduled election. And then they fall into that cycle, uh, for the next, they would, whoever get elected, they would be in that, that three-year cycle. You know, they would serve with all of the, so if, say you, say you appointed someone and next year you would have three people running. The two top vote getters would get the three-year term seat and the last vote getter would get one term to fill the three-year. So it's still, so.
John, is that any state on the same table?
John is getting that seat stays on the same cycle. It just, it just, when you appoint somebody, they can only serve to the next election. If you want a special election, they serve just the remainder of the, of his term. So his, his term, that term stays always at that. It comes down to whether you, you, whether you want to spend the money, having, it's, the term stays the same. It's whether you want to appoint someone and avoid the expense of a special election. The term is going to be the same. I mean, somebody has, somebody has served a year and then not run if they want to run for it.
So you would have sites run and then if they're, one of the top, as Mary got said, the top two get it on for the next three years. If they're a miracle getter, then they would only serve that last year and then have to run again. But one of the people who ever gets, well, at least number of votes is going to have to run the following year, whoever that is.
Yeah, it's probably not the new person.
Might not be anyone.
And if you choose to appoint, what are the criteria for that? What do we need to be aware of? The board, the board who chooses to appoint, whoever the number to. And what's our, my feeling? So it, it appears that, well, 90 days and, and I would say 90 days, the vacancy was created on, when we moved. Which, um, the main first would be the vacancy created. So whatever you may be, you're going to do it.
Almost perfect.
Right.
So we could think about what our options are and then take some action next time.
And actually, it's part of the purpose of the 90 days. We just want to be careful.
Oh, right. Well, no, for the election, it's not just the cost of the election, which is a lot of work. You know, there, there, you, you know, you, you can just ask our partner what, what would have to be done. And, and there's a timeframe associated with an election. The amount of advertising that can be done, that all has to click in, uh, well in advance of the day of an election. So I think that it would be very awkward to do an election because there are these issues. Uh, and, and because you have to start right now, wouldn't it, in order to, in order to, uh, pull it off in the timeframe a lot? But you, you may not even get it, but one of the, uh, what is it? It's long.
Forty-five days, I believe.
For the first notice.
Most, most boards that, that I've seen have a vacancy that goes to appoint. But you want a special election for that very reason. It's, it's the time and the cost associated with it. It's, it's. We can put out a notice or like publicly from hell, like if you put out a raw notice to let, to get an email. So you can, so when you appoint, you can, you can do it in one term of that appointment. You could advertise and say, we have a vacancy. Anybody who wants to be considered to, for a position on that vacancy can submit an allocation, whatever that is that you want it to be, or letter of intent or resume and whatever. Um, and then the board could choose to conduct interviews one evening and say, we're going to interview everybody that applied. We're going to narrow it down. I mean, that's, that's really your decision, your role is to, that's why the appointment is only for the next election cycle. Where you can choose to appoint somebody to serve in that role for the next, a month. And then that person has to run and, and be up for election.
I mean, did, um, any questions from the last couple of board meetings about this? And I can't think about it, I think we all have. Um, I, I would have to think, Dan, I think not so much the money to time, but we're in time crunch right there. Um, it would be difficult. And, and for growth would be nice for the person, the elected or appointed, to be able to attend the, um, to the school board meetings that Joe, you're going to have to attend. Um, I know you attended the one where it was like to be on the board, um, or no matter what. I, I agree with Dan. I think that doing a special election would be very great. Let's reaffirm to Joe, you know, the community gets to weigh in if, if it's like good as the next election. Right. Yeah. So I put an article in the advertiser announcing this, I just want to make sure that anyone, everyone in the community that wants to, um, that would you decide on a good pointer, anyone, everyone who wants to, has the opportunity to do this. Because we did discuss it in the last meeting, right, when you mentioned it very well. And I don't think any people are aware.
It's, it's actually in the advertiser this week.
It is.
I saw the online version today and, uh, Shelley put it, uh, put it in and put a, uh, the board's email address in there. Uh, and sort of people with questions to send them there. So she, she sort of did that already.
She, she reached out to me, I was like, well, come to the meeting because we're going to discuss some of this. Your favorite deadline is one day.
I'll just do. I, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad that Shelley already figured out, you know, because I think it's really tough to put people in action. But, um, I, I think it'd be a great idea to be in the. So then my next suggestion would be to set a deadline. You know, when do you want, when do you want to hear from those who are interested and then when do you want to conduct interviews? Because I think you should, I think you, I think, so my suggestion would be that you do that. If you're going to appoint, then, then you want to be able to appoint by the time, you know, everybody's sworn in and gone. Right. And give that person an opportunity and so that will do.
Right. And, and as you say, they would have the opportunity to go to probably some of these boxes too. Because if they're appointed by July, then they actually dominate. And I know you guys have an introduction to what it means to be a board member, but there are additional courses to offer, depending on what your role is or if you're in. Yeah. I mean, oh, yeah, I forgot.
Sign up for those in, in June, July.
Yeah. So if you were going by, by that, or by our reorganization meeting, then this person would have the opportunity. Those are sort of around her.
Right. Always talk about.
Well, let's, 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 there, there is our deadline. We, we will, uh, appoint someone on, on July, what is July? When, when?
July 7th.
July 7th. So we'll appoint someone on July 7th. Uh, so we back it up from there with regard to when, uh, when you let, receive letters from people. Frankly, I, I would suggest to keep it as simple as possible of a process. I mean, you, you get 100 letters, you're not going to interview 100 people, you know? And, and if you may read the letters and there may be someone who's eminently qualified and you say, oh, wow, this person's willing to do it. And we're so fortunate to have that person be with us for 10 months. Uh, then you might just jump that, that particular candidate. So I, I would suggest ask for a letter, uh, and then let's sit down with the board and read the letters and. Sure. Sure. I, I mean, I'd like to know what, what these people have done already to familiarize themselves with the district. Uh, they've, they've been on district committees. Have they been involved with the parent association? Have they been volunteers in the schools or with the athletic program? Uh, there, there are all kinds of people who are very active in our schools who would be excellent school employees.
No, 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 no. You gave a profile, Christian, pretend it is like, what's your connection or what's your connection to the district?
Although, although, yeah, I want to share with people, I want to tell people they have a specific connection with everything. Because you don't want people to feel that they have to have children that are in the district.
No, 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 no. But you'd want someone who's, who has an interest in education.
Well, so that's, is that what you're interested in?
Yeah. I mean, it could be a retired teacher or, uh, or it could be, I mean, there's a lot of people who, who may not, um, have children in school who would be, who would be an excellent.
I know, like, why do you want to serve at a school? I know, like, why do you want to serve at a school? I'm not afraid of the question, you know, people actually, but if a parent, their parent's connection may have a certain profile that if not from a part of it, that's that what is what is your um if it would, to me, it would put your connection to the district, but being, are you a grandparent, are you a taxpayer, are you a student or a quanist or whatever? What makes you think you'd make a great school board member? So like, I think that was one of the questions, one of the years.
Yeah.
One of the questions, like, advertising, planning, or sort of organization.
So then you need a deadline for when letters should be submitted. So how how long we need to organize um interviews, because what seven, you want time for the meeting?
Don't I guess the first one, your first um mentor meeting is.
Uh they they, I'm signed up in Niagara Falls on July sixteenth, Friday, Saturday.
And is that the only ones you have to do? Is that the the nine, usually one of them?
I think it covers both of them, doesn't it, tracking?
I think that the area county, so for taking place in the small.
Yeah.
Is what is that's.
Yeah, that's exactly what this is. I was out of town via Erie County.
There's also a deadline. Board. So my suggestion would be you put out a blast. Um you have resumes and letters and you do to the district by the twenty third. And you plan on interviewing, you know, the week of the twenty eighth, with the next expectation that whoever the board chooses is going to be seated on the second.
And if my answer is being correct, were you saying you may not want to do the interview process?
Well, we may interview, we may not interview every one of them.
Right, it's like just.
In other words, we we may narrow it down to four or three people, and that that could be better. You know, but I I wouldn't turn this into some giant, well, you you don't do this when you're hiring someone that's a little idiot in the interview. You don't interview everybody who sent you a letter. So uh let's let's narrow it down to two or three best people and let's chat with those that have important stuff.
How would you like the advertiser? Do you want to add something going in? The advertiser, I can sign out a blast on one of your parents, that's that's probably where most of the interest is going.
Can you put an ad in the advertisement?
Yes, yeah.
So so we want an ad in the advertisement that says, anyone interested, put your results over here. What time could you reach out to the communications subcommittee about if you want to be any follow up and link to it out to that thing?
Post that on the website and share that on the social media.
No, we're interested, we're going to ask the U T R to put that there.
Okay, Dr. E T O Presidents, all presidents. I think that would cover it. Black media, what they made any room, I protect you. After them.
And water monkeys.
And that's two weeks from today is when we were saying that the rest of the others will act. To Jackie, I'm assuming, where we have the work that's. I'm not retired before that, Jack.
I would get them all in and then send them to the board same day, you know, one one morning, send them to the board. And then you probably going to want to have um I would say like a board workshop, maybe on from the morning of Friday, the twenty fifth. And then uh schedule interviews for, you know, let's say the twenty ninth or twenty, you think of the thirtieth? And then and then.
Um the only thing is, is that, I guess that's not that important, because this, you won't go until the seventeenth of the advertiser. So that would be about. There we have it. Because they're going on the seventeenth, then they have a.
Yeah, and you're you're gonna, I mean, you can do those other things.
Sure.
For the people who have sent out a lot, who have signed out, you know.
I think, but I.
It's already, it's already, the conversation has already started in the advertiser. I'm watching that, because this is just a follow up.
Well, there's probably people at home right now who are watching this camera and who are writing their letter as we speak.
Hundreds of them. And then you could do um, you know, whatever, whatever the board's preferences on schedule in terms of timing of interviews on Tuesday, or Wednesday, we will call. Letters of interest due on the twenty third. So we're here, sorry. Letters of interest due, resumes of letters of interest due the twenty third. The board would meet at a workshop Friday, twenty fifth of the morning.
Okay.
To review them as a group.
Every day you get seven thirty and just meet.
Seven thirty, decide which candidates you want to interview. And then conduct interviews on the twenty ninth, thirtieth, at nine percent. I just think that if we're kind of on people's schedules or what you have, they might not be over there, they could stay time interviews. At this two hours, seven thirty, two, two, two and a half hours, seven thirty, two, 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 what's that? So the two, two and a half hour morning meeting for a little tricky. Yeah, I would do it that way.
Yeah. Yeah. Does that, does that have that right now, you know, one with thirty and then Tuesday, twenty ninth, first?
Do you want to go to six, at six, six P M meeting?
On the twenty ninth.
Yeah.
That works.
You can start earlier if you want, maybe at five, I think. I'm working this part where that's for you.
Five?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
I can make it work.
Five thirty one.
Five, five thirty would be.
Five thirty, if you say five.
Five thirty.
There he is. Five, stop. And then we'll be able to appoint that person on the seventh. And then we'll appoint him on the seventh. And then everyone who gets sworn in will see.
So we appointed at the beginning of the meeting and they immediately take out this, the the rest of this. We all, we're all sworn in on the first, on that meeting, so that person can be.
I like a plan. All right. Any legislation to come before the board?
No.
Uh does anyone want to remove a potential assignment for separate discussion? Here, one, may I have a motion to approve it? Okay, Kim Daniel, Senator Mike, Dan Brunson.
Yeah.
All of them, favorably, say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. Items requiring board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends the board of education nominate Linda Hoffman as a New York State School Board's area director for another term beginning January one two thousand and twenty two. May I have a motion? Hello? Move by Terry, Terry O'Leary, second, second, second by Judy Mallon, discussion.
Just show me one who has expressed interest.
Good.
Bill, this one I know.
Yes, all of them, we're aware. All of them, favorably, say aye. Very, six zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the revision of the tenure effective date for Stacy Song, our speech pathologist. The tenure of speech pathology is changing from September seventh of two thousand and twenty one to April eleventh, twenty twenty two. No, I think I read that wrong, but it's the effective date of September seventh, twenty twenty. All of them, favorably, please say aye. Very, six zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends the board of education. Oh, I didn't do that?
No.
Did I?
I just, I just voted. Yeah.
May I have a motion?
Okay.
Move my, Kim, second, and by, all of them, favorably, say aye. Very, six zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the appointment of Elizabeth.
Shockey.
Shockey. Probationary one point oh F T E position in the tenure area of math um beginning September one of two thousand and twenty one. All is detailed in your attachment. May I have a motion? I'm like, that's a good second. Second by Terry, discussion. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. Item D, the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the creation of a one point oh F T E teacher position in the math tenure area on effective September one, two thousand and twenty one. May I have a motion? Move by Judy Mallon, second. Okay, second by Jessica Armbruce, discussion. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. Item E, the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the appointment of Melanie Olza to a probationary one point oh F T E position in the tenure area of math, may I ask, beginning September one of two thousand and twenty one. All is detailed in your attachment. May I have a motion? Move by Judy Mallon, second. Second. Second by Jessica Armbruce, discussion. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. Item F, the superintendent recommends the board of education appoint Young and Wright as the district architects for the purposes of performing the required building condition survey in the two thousand and twenty one, twenty two capital outlet project. May I have a motion?
Aye.
Move by Dan Brunson, second. Second by Terry O'Leary, discussion. All of them, favorably, please say aye. Very, six zero. Item G, the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the creation of a one point oh F T E administrative position in the assistant superintendent tenure area effective July fifth of two thousand and twenty one. May I have a motion?
Show a motion.
Move by Dan Brunson, second. Second by Judy Terry, Jessica Armbruce. Discussion. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. Item. H. Right away, item H. It always makes me nervous now.
I think us, how you think it makes us feel?
The superintendent recommends the board of education accept the resignation of Jessica L. Lyons, Hartville Elementary principal effective July fourth, two thousand and twenty one. May I have a motion? Move by Jessica, second by Kim Daniel, discussion. We're sad to see you go. Six, six. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. Why do mine? The superintendent recommends the board of education accept the resignation of Mark Memret, Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Personnel Chief Information Officer, effective July fourth, two thousand and twenty one. May I have a motion? Move by Kim Daniel, second by Dan Brunson, discussion. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero.
Do you realize if we end this meeting right now, we'd be forced to administer.
I was thinking the same thing. You're major, Mr. Brunson.
Can I also point out my my wife, who I love more than life itself, said, you know, this is the third time the board has asked for your resignation. I'm the only one in the personnel office who has a folder that just calls resignations.
I would like to love her.
But that being said, let's keep moving.
Item C, the superintendent recommends that the board of education approve the appointment of Jessica Lyons to a probationary one point oh F T E position in the tenure of Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I'm not going to read all of the rest of that. All is detailed in the agenda and the as your attachment, effective July one, two thousand and uh no, July fifth, two thousand and twenty one. May I have a motion? Secretary O'Leary, second by Judy Mallon, discussion. I heard. Congratulations. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Six zero. And K, the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the appointment of Mark Memret to a probationary one point oh position in the tenure area of assistant superintendent effective July fifth, two thousand and twenty one. All is detailed in the agenda and your attachment. May I have a motion?
Aye.
Move by Dan Brunson, seconded by Jessica Armbruce, discussion. Well deserved, Mr. Memret.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations to both Jess and Mark. Uh yeah, well deserved, uh they've worked very hard and great to work with, incredibly supportive, and I'm really excited to work their new position. Congratulations.
Beautiful. All of them, aye, are the appointment of the assistant superintendent. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. Congratulations to you both.
Thank you.
Item L, the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the agreement approve the successive tentative agreement to the expiring collective bargaining agreement between the district and the East Door Administrative Association. And um that resolution is listed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Move by Kim Daniel, second. Second by Dan Brunson, discussion. Thank you all for that um that that agreement. All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. Item N, M. Superintendent recommended the board of education approve the resolution authorizing the superintendent to establish a funding plan with specific dollar amounts to be determined subsequent to the district's fiscal year.
A move.
Move by Dan Brunson, second. Second by Terry O'Leary, discussion.
Well, this was a reference to boards from Lightman, we're not all very aware of it. About two years ago, the auditors uh requested that the district uh have a plan for how to use any excess funds beyond the four percent you're permitted to carry over from year to year, the not appropriate amount. And so this is, this uh adheres to that legal requirement and and yet it doesn't tie our hands. We can take action after the finalization of the of the accounts to determine exactly how much we will transfer to these areas.
This question there, does that mean that the that the funds can be applied to the reserve without another board motion in the room?
No, in order to, in order to um uh to apply them to the reserve, we'll have to have another resolution, we'll get the exact dollar.
This is how they count.
That we have a plan to do it and we're, you know, we're not just really healing, saving money for posterity here.
Yeah, I think.
All of them, favorably, please say aye. Very, six zero. Item N, the superintendent recommends the board of education approve the resolution continuing Mr. Russ as superintendent of schools with the district pursuant to the terms and conditions of employment incorporated into a contract of employment with the president of the board. It's hereby authorized and directly to execute. That contract was provided to you all earlier this year. May I have a motion? Move by Terry O'Leary, second by Judy Mallon, discussion. Brian is with the unanimous board of education, if you can hear from Mr. Russell. Thank you, David, for your service. It's been valuable. It's been wonderful.
Thank you again for your support. The last ten years have been really, you have great and harsh, harsh relationships that we share. I've been here, I've done a great job, um talking through things and challenging, uh to do our best, so I'm very appreciative of your support. Thank you.
All of them, favorably, please say aye.
Aye.
Very, six zero. The next special meeting is June eighteenth. There's another meeting June twenty fifth. Three hour meetings, July seventh.
I suppose, the eighteenth, it's at thirty A M.
Yes, yes.
And then the twenty ninth, twenty fifth, is the second, and the twenty ninth.
And the twenty ninth is the, you know, interviews. Five thirty.
A morning meeting, uh like the, a evening meeting, five, evening, twenty five.
And I choose to be very jolly, maybe, um, I think it's something. At their. And I'm nice, definitely. Thank you.
And I have a motion to adjourn. Great, Jessica, second. Kim Daniel, all of them, favorably, please say aye.
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 Carrie.